Yes.
Okay.
Good, okay. Action.
Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone on the webcast to today's public session of our Financial Accounting Foundation Board of Trustees meeting. Today's meeting will include reports from the FASB Chairman, the GASB Chairman, the FAFF President and CEO, and the FAFF Secretary and Treasurer. We'll also receive reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council, and we'll receive a report from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to those reports, I'm very pleased to announce some important appointments today. This morning, the FAFF Board of Trustees voted to reappoint Jim Croker as FASB Vice Chairman effective July 1st, 2018. Since being appointed to the FASB in 2013 as Vice Chairman, Jim has done an excellent job in leading the FASB's efforts in educating stakeholders on how to most effectively understand and implement the revenue recognition standard. He also played a pivotal role in setting standards during a dynamic period in the Board's history. In addition to the new standard on revenue recognition, Jim has played an important role in developing new standards on leases, credit losses, not-for-profit financial reporting, and hedging. Please join me in congratulating Jim. I'm also pleased to announce that the trustees have appointed a new FASB member to succeed Mark Siegel. Gary Buser will join the FASB on July 1st, 2018, from Lazard Asset Management LLC, where he currently serves as a Director and Research Analyst. Gary has over 30 years of experience in investment management, working with financial statements from a portfolio manager, equity research, and accounting analyst perspective. Prior to joining Lazard in 2000, Gary held positions at Evergreen Funds, SG Cowen, Schuss &amp; Lehman Brothers, and Kidder Peabody. He will succeed Mark, who joined the FASB in 2008, and whose second and final term concludes on June 30th, 2018. Additionally this morning, the FAFF Board of Trustees voted to appoint three new trustees who will begin serving on January 1st, 2018. The new trustees are Kathleen Casey, a Senior Advisor with Potomac Global Partners LLC, and a former SEC Commissioner. Kathy will serve as an at-large trustee. Jeffrey Esser, former CEO of the Government Finance Officers Association, will also join the Board of Trustees as a governmental trustee. And David Villa, the Chief Investment Officer of the Wisconsin Investment Board, will also serve as an at-large trustee. Kathy, Jeff, and David will succeed current trustees Charles Cox, John Dugan, and Anne-Marie Pietoc. We thank Charles, John, and Anne-Marie for their years of service on the Board of Trustees and the commitment they have shown in overseeing the FASB and GASB while successfully promoting and protecting the independence of the Boards. We will have more to say on this subject later in this session. And finally, the FAFF Board of Trustees has voted to reappoint Andy McMaster as Chairman of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council. As FASAC Chairman, Andy has provided invaluable service to the standard-setting process. He has a great ability to solicit, excuse me, elicit candid feedback from FASB stakeholders, and then to distill this feedback to its essence in ways that are useful for the FASB and its deliberations. We are grateful to Andy for his leadership and delighted he will continue in this role. With that, let's move on to our regular agenda. The first item of business is to approve the minutes from our August 21st, 22nd, September 15th, and October 19 meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Okay, thank you. With that, let's move to our first report, which is Standard Setting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My co-chair and I are going to tag-team this. I'm going to first talk about the discussion that the Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee had yesterday at our quarterly meeting. In particular, we discussed PCC, or Private Company Council Meeting Observations, and heard from Harold Monk, who's the FASB liaison to the PCC, and Russ Golden also provided his perspectives on the September PCC meeting, as well as in progress, the progress being made by both the PCC and the FASB on projects related to private company stakeholders. Our committee member Diane Rubin attended part of the September PCC meeting, and she also shared her observations. Yesterday in our meeting, we meet twice a year in the committee with the PCC Chair Candy Wright, and that, one of those meetings occurred yesterday, and we continued to, we took advantage of that to be an opportunity for Candy to share with us her perspectives on the FASB and the PCC interactions to ensure we continue to address private company perspectives in the FASB's agenda. Candy also spent a few minutes talking with the full Board of Trustees earlier this morning, and gave a full accounting of PCC progress, activities, and interactions. Nancy?
For the major part of the agenda of the committee yesterday, Russ and Dave reported on progress that the Boards have made a major agenda topics and other matters, and they will be reporting directly here right after us, so I don't want to reiterate what they're going to say, but we discussed issues such as the financial reporting model that GASB is now starting, and the task force meetings held on that project, as well as on the revenue and expense recognition projects, and I assume you're going to go into that in greater depth. And for FASB, Russ briefed us on the three projects FASB added to the technical agenda following a year-long agenda consultation project, the three major ones being liabilities and equity, financial performance reporting, and segment reporting. And in addition, they talked with the committee about the progress they've made this year in their non-technical goals, primarily related to the standard-setting process itself. We then heard from trustees on their observations of meetings that they had attended, meetings of various advisory groups and the Boards, and their insight into how smoothly the process is running, the participation, the listening, and response. Eloise Foster and I, Trustee Foster and Trustee Cox, attended the GASAC meeting, and we were very impressed, as I had said earlier, by the participation of all of the parties, and not simply making statements, but actual exchanges of opinion and information that will be a significant part, I think, of the process. The trustees, as you know, try to attend at least one advisory group or Board meeting a year, and earlier this month, it's my understanding, that trustee Sue Carter sat in on both a FASB and a GASB Board meeting. And I know Myra Drucker attended the FASB's Investor Advisory Committee meeting, and if they want to add a few words, they would be more than welcome. And I'd just like to point out to everybody here, and to those out there who are watching, these meetings, the FASB and the GASB meetings, are both open and televised. It's a wonderful thing to be there in person, but you can also observe from your home or office. Recommend it. Sue?
On November 1st, I sat in on portions of both the FASB and the GASB meetings. At the FASB meeting, they were discussing the disclosure framework, and at the GASB meeting, the implementation guidance for post-employment benefits. I found both meetings to be very well-run, I found the staff to be prepared, and it was very informative, so, thank you.
On November 8th, I actually observed a FASB meeting online, so that was not included in the report. And I was particularly interested in that one because the discussion was on materiality. And while I would echo all of Sue's comments, what came across to me as well was the advantages of the diversity of backgrounds in the Board members, and the richness that that brought to the discussion of materiality, different, really different points of view based on what people's past experience was, you know, and it was a very fruitful conversation, and I was very impressed with it. I attended the Investor Advisory Committee meeting the next day, and again, echoing all of Sue's comments, extremely well-chaired by Sue Cosper, very good dialogue breakout sessions, all of FASB members attended breakout sessions with the investors. From my point of view, as an investor, I was particularly impressed by the ability of the FASB staff to translate into investor-speak the accounting, technical talk, because I am not a technical accountant, and many of the investors who were there are not technical accountants, and I really praised the FASB staff and the work that they did in translation on that issue.
Mr. Chairman, unless there are questions of the committee?
Any questions for Nancy or Teri? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move to the report of the FASB Chair, Russ.
Thank you. My report is on Master Page 223 of your materials. I want to highlight a few of the more significant items that we've accomplished in the third quarter. We issued a number of final documents and a number of proposals. The most significant one was improving and simplifying the accounting for hedging activities. It is, companies are able to early adopt it, and we have had a number of questions around transition, which would imply companies will be early adopting it. We also issued exposure on improving, providing a practical expedient related to land easements for leases. The reason I bring that up is we do expect, as a result of this, we add a number of other requests for practical expedients, and we do expect to, as a Board, to address that in the coming weeks. It relates to a transition and allocation of various performance obligations in leases, as well as some potential disclosure changes. So the Board looks forward to the staff's analysis, and like I said, we expect that in the coming weeks. As Nancy talked about, we did make decisions associated with our agenda consultation where we added three important projects. Two of these were specifically requested by the user community and had broad-based support from the user community to provide additional transparency about the nature and function of revenue and expenses on a company's performance statement, as well as potential additional transparency by providing more columns in the segment footnote. The Board also added a project associated with distinguishing liabilities from equity. That is a very complex set of accounting rules today, which causes uncertainty in the preparer and auditor, and we're looking to see if there's ways in which we can simplify and align the different models today. We also made some changes to our research agenda. The research agenda is important, it is the initial starting phase of projects, and we will be describing what we want to research and why. We continue to have active dialogue with the private company community. There was a town hall in Georgia where both Harold and myself, as well as the staff, attended, and we had numerous conversations throughout the quarter with private company stakeholders, including members of the PCC. We continue to engage with the members of the international accounting community. A lot of us went to London and had various dialogues with the International Accounting Standards Board, as well as representatives of other standards boards throughout the world. We find those dialogues extremely valuable, we're able to learn from experiences that they are, that they have had to help us. For example, the Accounting Standards Board Japan is currently, has an active project on the accounting for Bitcoins, and we have a research project on the accounting for Bitcoins, so we're able to learn from their experiences, and that will all be brought to the Board at an appropriate time as it relates to that potential adjourned request. The Chair report goes on to describe the types of education activities, as well as the speeches delivered. Be happy to answer any questions the trustees have.
Questions for Russ? Diane?
I have a question, Russ. I understand the FASB's recently changed how it communicates its research agenda, and can you just elaborate on that and tell us why, and what you hope to accomplish with those changes?
Sure. This was actually Christine's idea, and what, I'll let Christine give you the details, but it was really her idea as to how we could get more academic input in the process.
So back in July, we added an academic landing page to the FASB website in order to try to strengthen the bridge that we have with the academic community, make it easier for them to share their research with us, and also to provide them an easy access to resources that are available on the FASB website that they can use in their classroom, but also in thinking about research questions. And so part of this was getting the research agenda and highlighting the points that Russ had mentioned earlier, you know, why are we looking at this question as a research topic? When do we think it might move to the technical agenda? So that we can then, from that academic landing page, point academics to the research agenda and to the information that's on that research agenda, so that they're aware a little bit further out where we're heading in some of these topics, and if they have research that they're currently doing, to share it with us early on, or to stimulate research on questions that could be of interest to us down the path.
Other questions for Russ? Chuck?
Yeah, and I think this is probably more for Jim Croker, given your, you know, expertise and assistance in the revenue recognition standard. This is our last Board meeting before the effective date for public companies, so how would you assess, you know, our readiness?
So I would say overall, we're in a really solid place with respect to the mandatory adoption date for public companies. It's 1/1/18 for a calendar company, and that really is in large part due to the efforts of Sue and the dedicated and expert team that she's put together from our standpoint. I think the TRG was a very successful endeavor in providing education, also bringing some pragmatism in a limited number of areas where we saw perhaps implementation going a different direction, so sort of bringing that back, working very closely with Mark and the investor community, Mark Siegel, on webcasts to inform them by industry of the impact of the new standard, also providing training to regulators, so for example, to the PCOB on the impact of the new standard. So again, I think we're on solid footing for that mandatory adoption date. Certainly, if you're a preparer or an auditor out there, you, you know, probably are saying, wait a minute, I don't have time to breathe, so I don't mean that there's not a lot of work yet to be done. And of course, implementation for public companies is not the end of the process. Private companies have a implementation, mandatorily prescribed implementation date that's one year later, and so continuing to work with the PCC, making sure that as they begin to more in-depth pick up the standard, we're available as a resource to them, to help them learn from the experience as well. And then I guess I'd be remiss to say, I don't think it ends there. After people implement, we still need to stand ready to monitor practice. Is it implemented in a way that actually achieves the objective? Are there things that either we or the EITF need to do? And of course, doing that in the spirit of a global standard, so working together with the ISB to make sure that a converged standard stays converged.
Thanks, Jim. Other questions for Ken?
Thank you, Chuck. Mine's a technology question, and then maybe Sue Cosper or Dave might share some perspective. You know, we've been investing in technology to help enable the FASB and GASB staff. Could you share a little bit of perspective of how that's going and the benefit that you are seeing?
So from the perspective of the FASB staff, if you think about the comments that we get on our projects, for example, through comment letters, or our external review, or just our outreach meetings, we spend a lot of time, what I'll call cataloging those comments. And from our sort of preliminary assessments on some of the projects that we've used the CRM system on, we've been able to reduce the time by about 90% of staff time that can be then redeployed to do things that are a little bit more effective and efficient in the process. And so from that perspective, it's been terrific, as well as, for me personally, having a dashboard where I can actually go in and see, you know, what are the top 10 technical inquiries that we've gotten, and, you know, how many topics, or how many inquiries do we get on that particular topic at any given time, has been very useful. So it's so far, so good.
And Ken, we've had similar experiences, both the reduction in time as far as the analysis of comment letters. Also, the CRM has been particularly helpful in our outreach efforts, you know, identifying stakeholders that we need to reach out to, whether it's talking about note disclosures or the financial reporting model.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to now turn to the report of the FASAC Chair, Andy.
Thank you, Chuck. The FASAC Chair report can be found on Master Page 237. It includes recent activities, as well as some upcoming activities and other administrative matters. I'm going to ask Alicia, in her capacity as the Executive Director of FASAC, to comment on our most recent meeting, and then I'll come back and talk about upcoming activities and some of the other matters.
Thanks, Andy. And I'd just like to start by observing that because of Andy's strong leadership with the group and the high bar that he sets for the council members, that we were able to continue the momentum with our September meeting and tackled two topics that are pretty foundational for the organization. The first was on the conceptual framework, and the conceptual framework is a tool that's been used by the Board for decades, and it really helps in promoting consistency on how accounting issues are addressed. Given the Board's recent projects that focus on improving and enhancing the framework, we held a session with FASAC about the role of the conceptual framework. Council members made a number of observations about the conceptual framework. One was that while the conceptual framework could be a mandatory tool for the Board, that the Board was required to always follow, that notion generally was not desirable nor operational. Another was defining or changing the role of the conceptual framework could affect the stakeholders' level of engagement in the projects that are on the agenda. Also, council members generally commented that the current level of influence that the conceptual framework has on the standard-setting process appears to be appropriate, and that it creates a level of accountability in the FASB's process. Lastly, some suggested that there should be a presumption that Board members would follow the concepts in the framework and provide clear explanations of their reasoning when they deviated from those concepts, and the vehicle for that communication would be in the basis for conclusions. We may revisit this area with a different focus at a future session, following further progress from the Board on its conceptual framework projects. The second topic that we tackled also related to a central aspect of setting accounting standards, and that is assessing the costs and benefits. Council members discussed and generally agreed with how the FASB defines and considers the costs and benefits throughout the development of accounting standards. Council members made observations about the nature of some of those costs, the challenges in estimating those costs, and some of the challenges in gathering data about the benefits of potential accounting changes. For major accounting standards, council members shared suggestions related to the need for a post-implementation assessment of costs and benefits, and those suggested, the suggestions related specifically to the types of data related to costs and benefits that could be gathered, as well as the timing. With that, I'll turn to Andy for the remainder of the report.
Thanks, Alicia. You can see that some of the themes we have are consistent with the other topics you've heard today. At our next meeting, we are going to have a number of different topics. In the morning, we're going to focus on technology. You may recall that in June, we also addressed technology, but we think of this as Technology Part II. In this instance, we're going to move away from the evolution of technology as it relates to the preparation and consumption of financial information, to some of the more high-level issues around technology that are going to be facing us, we believe will be facing us going forward broadly in the marketplace and as it relates to financial statement preparation. Some of those topics will include blockchain, cloud trends, digital currency, and to a lesser extent, artificial intelligence and quantum computing. As you might expect, the way we will tackle this topic is going to be a little bit different than what we've done before, because while I don't know how well-informed all of you are on these topics, I think it's fair to say that some of us do not feel sufficiently well-informed to just jump in, in great depth. So we're going to have a focus that begins with what I'll call an educational component. At the dinner the night before, we've already identified a dinner speaker who is highly qualified to help inform us on some of these topics, and we'll use the introductory session and the breakout session the next day to continue that, and then prompt more, if you will, a deeper summary of potential topics for the future. We expect we will revisit some of these in future meetings. In the afternoon, that would be the morning session. In the afternoon session, we're going to have what we call a three-part topic. The first one will be pace of change, and David, I liked your description of major-major, and then major, and then targeted improvements. But practically speaking, any of those classifications are going to be in the eye of the individual that's responsible for the implementation. And so, you know, we want to bring back that dialogue a little bit and find out if there's, there are perceptions among both the preparer and user community as to implications that may not have been considered, or that should be considered. The second topic that afternoon will be segments. I think you've heard Russ comment that that is one of the topics that made its way out of the invitation to comment, will be a, one of the areas that they'll do a deeper dive. I think you can appreciate, the first time we brought this forward, it was intended to determine whether or not it was a topic that was worthy of going on the agenda. Now we'll do a deeper dive into that. The last one is really a high-level focus on some of the implementation projects that have taken place, not as it relates to the FASB itself, on rev-rec leases and CECL. You could put hedging in there as well. The objective there is really not so much to think of the accounting, technical implications of implementation, but really to understand what have been the issues that the preparers and others in the community have had to address as it relates to the implementation of those standards. Make sure that we have a deep understanding, it somewhat follows the comment that Jim made before, that implementation is not over, that it will, it will continue in different ways. So that's the plan for the next, the next meeting. We also have taken a longer-term, and this turns to the administrative side, a much longer-term perspective in terms of how we want to identify and recommend to the trustees new members for FASAC. So we've opened that aperture up, we want to look further down the road, and somewhat move away from an annual approach to that process. The other comment that I would make, and I ask for your input on this, we also include for you folks the forward-looking agenda that we have for FASAC topics. You can see from that, you know, where we're, where we're thinking. They will move around, they will not fall into the calendar precisely as they're reflected, but we would welcome any comments you have on those topics, but more importantly, other topics that you think we ought to consider. And with that, I'll pause for questions.
Any questions for Andy? Teri?
Andy, FASAC is the most broad-based, diverse set of perspectives that the Board has in its advisory groups, and that's really important, so we get lots of perspectives on what's happening at the Board. Could you talk a little bit about your efforts to kind of maintain and enhance the diversity, broad set of views on FASAC?
Teri, I'd welcome the opportunity, because I think this is a topic that's not only relevant to FASAC, but more broadly to, you know, all of the different elements of both FASAC and GAESAC. But first, if I could, let me provide a little bit of context. FASAC is essentially, runs between 32 and 34 council members. Our objective historically has been to try and bring in a number of different disciplines into the, into the FASAC membership. It's included historically preparers, users, think of those as investors largely, practitioners, meaning to a large extent auditors, academics, other associations. We have representation from the regulatory community, the SEC, the PCOB that join us at those meetings. So that's where we've been historically. But I think if you, if you just listen to the topics that I commented on for future meetings and some of our more recent meetings, I think we recognize that we need to have a broader outreach and a deeper breadth of understanding coming into the FASAC meetings. And we began looking for that outreach this year, trying to attract a broader perspective of constituents to FASAC itself. We do maintain an historical database, and so we've got a great pipeline out there that we can call upon. So far, it represents what I'll call the more traditional areas, but we want to try and identify folks that are coming from areas of technology, from people that are innovators. We want to look more broadly across other industries that we really haven't had representation from in the past. And as I said before, we want to, to have a much further forward-looking approach to how we ultimately identify and recommend to the trustees potential members for FASAC. And, you know, again, you know, we're doing this on the basis of what we see, but we would welcome input back from the trustees as well, as well as support for identifying some of the folks that fall into those categories.
Any other questions for Andy? Okay, thank you, Andy, Alicia. Let's turn to the report of the GASB Chair, David.
Thank you, Chair. My report starts on Page 242, and I'm happy to announce that we had no new pronouncements or due-process documents issued in the third quarter, which made our stakeholders very happy. We did have one addition to our current technical agenda. We added a project on conduit debt obligations, and this is simply a reexamination of GASB Interpretation Number Two, and thus of GASB Interpretation Number Two and thus clearly a Group One activity within the scope of the authority of the GASB. As Nancy mentioned, we continue to work on our major projects, which are the Financial Reporting Model Reexamination and Revenue and Expense Recognition. With major projects, we established task force at the very beginning of the project and they operate throughout the life cycle of the project and provide really valuable input. We have preparers, auditors, and users on these task force that provide a lot of input to the Board as we discuss the papers and the issues that we're trying to address within those particular topics. So, a lot of activity there. I'm going to take the balance of my comments and focus really on collaboration. You'll see several things within my report that talk about collaboration, but I thought it would be good to mention it in combination together because it gives you a better perspective. First off, just starting with the collaboration of the FASB and the GASB. Many of you might not notice, but Russ and I meet with Dave and Sue on a quarterly basis to talk about topics that are of interest to both Boards. Dave and Sue meet on a monthly basis to actually put in place those types of activities where we can cooperate with each other. So, there's a lot of that going on. And the GASB and FASB teams, project teams themselves, meet frequently. And just during the third quarter, our teams met together on derivatives, fair value, revenue recognition, not-for-profit accounting, and cloud computing. So, a lot of activity that takes place on a daily basis. And a lot of this occurs in the background, so you don't see it on a daily basis. So, I thought it was nice to highlight that. But not only do the FASB and the GASB work together while obviously being under the same roof, it's very easy to do that, but we also work with our international standard setters. And probably a good example of that would be the LISA standard. If you step back and take a look at the LISA standard, obviously the FASB was working with their international counterpart to establish the LISA standard. They were ahead of us when we took on that project, so the GASB got to really benefit from a lot of the discussions and research that the FASB did. Once we got through ours, we were closely followed by the Federal Accounting Standards Advisory Board, which also took a look at what we were doing and they issued an exposure draft that's very much a mirror of the GASB standard that we issued. And it doesn't stop there because in addition to that, the International Public Sector Accounting Standards Board is working on their LISA standard. And they actually sent earlier this year, one of their project team members to the GASB to meet with us and talk about some of the decisions we made and the things that we looked at. So, this type of collaboration just occurs on a regular basis, but that's an example on one standard where five different standard-setting boards actually worked together, leveraged off each other's work, and made the decisions that were best for the environment that they're setting standards for. Just thought it'd be nice to bring that together from a collaboration standpoint. That'll turn it over to any questions there might be.
Questions for David? Sue?
David, I noticed on your technical agenda, Page 248 or seven of your report, you use a red-yellow-blue coating to talk about the status of the project relative to its benchmark. It's a little difficult to decipher. Could you elaborate a little bit on the report?
Yeah, definitely for those that aren't on the Oversight Committee, that's a good question. What we do with all of our different issues that we're dealing with is we put them on our agenda as major projects, or as Andy mentioned, major-major projects, and then also as practice issues. Our major projects are something that's broader-based, like the Financial Reporting Model, Revenue and Expense Recognition, and those projects generally can involve up to three due process documents, a invitation to comment, a preliminary views, and an exposure draft. So, the benchmark that we set for those types of projects is usually four to six years by the time we allow time for stakeholder input and so forth. And then the practice issues are more narrowly focused and those generally take three years or less. So, it's a benchmark that we take each project to and try and keep a timeline on where we're at.
So, it's not one benchmark for the whole report?
No, no.
It's project by project?
Project by project.
Yes, this question's for your Vice Chair, Jeff Pravidi. Jeff, you're a Board Member with User Perspective and one of your main objectives is stakeholder outreach. Can you highlight some of the recent efforts that you've had or maybe having, coming up in regards to stakeholder outreach?
Sure Charles. Of the outreach that I've done so far, I will say that groups are very receptive to the GASB, sitting down with them and discussing their interests. I would highlight recent and upcoming meetings we are having with the major credit rating agencies. Given my background, it was naturally, natural for me to help to organize these. I'd say the rating agencies are what I'd call power users of governmental financial statements, given their market coverage. In fact, when I was at S&amp;P, we had ratings on over 10,000 different municipal governments in the United States. So, their perspective as users is very valuable. I also think that keeping the dialogue open with them is mutually beneficial because not only do the agencies gain a better understanding of our standards, we also gain another window in how those standards are used and understood in practice.
Other questions for Dave and his posse? Eloise?
I noticed in the International Activities Section of Dave's report that some GASB staff members met with the finance group from South Korea. Can you just briefly elaborate on that meeting and what you learned?
Well, the, as Dave mentioned, you know, this is part of our collaborative effort is to meet with other standard setters. And we have the honor to host groups throughout the year as does the FASB. And there are a lot of benefits from those meetings. First of all, you know, a new group like the Korean standard setters, it gives us an opportunity to share our experiences. I mean, we believe that the FASB and GASB have a world-class standard-setting process, but it took time to get there and it's still an improving process. So, it gives us a chance to talk about that process with them and so they can not only learn from what we're doing, but also learn from our mistakes. And we recognize that all knowledge does not reside in Norwalk, Connecticut. And therefore, even though we may be meeting with a newer group, or we could be meeting with a more experienced group like the PSAB out of Canada, we can learn from them and it can help us improve our process. And I think one of the byproducts of these meetings that we've noticed over the last few years is that it gives some of our staff members a chance to meet with the standard setters from their own country. For example, Parim Kim, who's a postgraduate technical assistant with us, he is from South Korea. And so, he translated all of our slides and actually helped with the technical presentation. And I can tell you, there's a lot of technical terms like deferred inflows of resources that people in the United States may have problems with. I can tell you, in translation, something gets lost there. And so, having someone who understands it from a technical side and explaining is very helpful. And we also had the same experience with a Chinese delegation where Jalan Su, who's a project manager on our staff, she also, you know, translated slides and co-presented with me. And so, just, you know, we may not always take away and, you know, say, "Well, we should improve this," but just establishing those relationships, knowing that you can reach out and talk to somebody about an issue is extremely beneficial to our process. So, thanks for raising that.
Yeah, I would add too that when we have international translators on our own staff, when they're saying something to the group that's there and they all start laughing, Dave and I look at each other like, "What did he just say?"
Okay, other questions for Dave and company? Okay. Let's turn to the GASB Chair Report, Robert?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. My report begins on Master Page 250 of your materials and covers the period July 1st through October 31st of this year. The council met most recently on October 30th and 31st in East Elmhurst, New York. We were fortunate to have all the GASB Board members there, including new Board Member Chris Knight, as well as the Government Trustees and FAF President/CEO Terry Polley. Couple of the items and the topics that were covered at the meeting with respect to giving feedback on the GAS, on the Board's technical agenda. We did provide feedback on two of the major-major projects, the first being the Financial Reporting Model. Some of the items discussed with the Board were the focus of governmental funds, reconciliations of the governmental fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements, and the need for a governmental fund statement of cash flows. The second major-major project that we gave feedback on was the Revenue and Expense Recognition Project, specifically providing feedback on the structure and content on the first due process document that's going to be issued with respect to that project, the invitation to comment. Another significant discussion that we had related to the current exposure draft and discussing the feedback that the Boards received on certain debt disclosures, including feedback on the definition of debt, proposed new and amended disclosures related to debt, and the proposal to disclose direct borrowings and direct placements individually in note disclosures relative to debts, debt for governments. We did also have a presentation and feedback relating to a potential project that the staff had done pre-agenda research on related to social impact bonds, which are also referred to sometimes as pay-for-success financings, in a draft prospectus for a project. The GASB members provided feedback that was consistent with the staff's recommendation to, again, not add a project to the agenda. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure other stakeholders would applaud that. Then, lastly, we continued the agenda item that we've been including for the last year or so relative to emerging practice issues. It's important in the council's view to have that agenda item to provide an opportunity to elicit stakeholder input to the Board on potential items that may be coming up as practice issues that the Board needs to address. Relative to administrative activities, the Executive Committee of the Council discussed reviewing and updating the operating procedures for the Council in 2018 in conjunction with the Board's review of its procedures. We, the Executive Committee also affirmed a recommendation that the trustees adopted to appoint Alan Skelton as the Vice Chair of the Council. Alan represents the National Association of State Auditors, Comptrollers, and Treasurers. And the next meeting of the GASB will actually occur after your next trustee meeting and it will be March 5th and 6th here in Norwalk. At that meeting, we're going to welcome actually eight new members and appreciate the trustees in appointing those members, three that were appointed this year, and five newly-appointed members that will start their terms on January 1st. Having all those members totaling 31 allows us to carry out our function in a very effective manner and solicit the input that is very valuable for the Board. With that, I would open up to any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Questions for Robert? Ann?
I have to compliment the incredible champs that are on GASB and noble small-town to call LaGuardia Airport, East Elmhurst.
Thank you Ann. Okay, with that, let's move to the FAF President/CEO Report. Terry?
Thank you Chuck. I'm going to talk about two items this afternoon. One is our ongoing technology initiatives and the other is our 2018 budget process. We have spoken in this space before about the progress that we've made over the last couple of years on our IT transformation project, objectives of which were to address some of the challenges that we had in our business processes, both standard-setting processes as well as administrative. We had found ourselves in the position of having under-invested in technology over the years and so the last couple of years have been spent catching up to the current state. And I'm happy to say that we are winding down this first phase. Both SharePoint and Dynamics have successfully moved to a business-as-usual status. And I think the comments of Sue and Dave earlier were emblematic of some of the successes that we've had, so I appreciate that input. Remaining are a few other items, including implementation of our Business Continuity and Disaster Recovery Plan, as well as deploying, excuse me, hardware and technologies in support of cybersecurity, which is on the minds of many Boards these days. With that aspect of our technology program having moved to steady state, we are now shifting to two other areas of focus, both of which are operation-critical. One is the assessment of our publishing platform and related business processes, which is underway right now, and that assessment is expected to be finished by year-end and we will be coming back to the Board with a recommendation on the way forward there. We also have underway an intensive content strategy initiative. With respect to that initiative, let me just say a couple things. We are taking a look at our current state of publishing, current stakeholder needs, looking at the publishing industry, it exists right now, some benchmarking of peers. We want to make sure we have the right content, the right products that meet our stakeholders' needs, including our internal stakeholders, the FASB and the GASB, as they conduct their standard-setting activities. Right now, we are in a data gathering phase where we've been speaking with a number of different stakeholders to get their perspectives on how they are using FASB and GASB content. And then our intent would be to look at both of those areas, both the publishing platform as well as the output as we move forward. On the 2018 budget, earlier today, the Board of Trustees approved the FAF's budget for 2018. That was the culmination of a process that began back in July and has had considerable interaction with the trustees through the Audit and Finance Committee, as well as the full Board. Net, the FASB and GASB recoverable expenses are, in the case of the FASB, they have declined a little over 5%. The GASBs have declined about 3%. Our accounting support fees however are, in the case of FASB, accounting support fees are increasing somewhat. GASBs are remaining flat. I want to remind everyone that our accounting support fees, while recoverable expenses are a key component of that, another key component is the amount of reserve funds that the FAF trustees voluntarily make available to offset those accounting support fees. And that amount is really what is driving the fluctuation year-to-year in this case on the accounting support fees. There is a very succinct explanation about how our budget is constructed on our website and it talks about the interaction of both recoverable expenses and the offset from reserve funds that interplay with each other in determining the final accounting support fees. So, bottom line, there's a number of things impacting the level of reserve funds and we're estimating a lower offset than in prior years. The good news, I want to assure everyone, is that we do continue to monitor our expenses carefully. We have a net decrease in headcount year-over-year reflecting the needs of the FASB and the GASB. We're conscious that our primary funding comes from accounting support fees. Our next step is to send the approved budget to the SEC for their review. Their review encompasses determining whether the accounting support fee has been calculated in accordance with Sarbanes-Oxley. And once that review is complete and they have issued their order, we would plan to post on our website a summary budget for 2018. I will stop there. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Terry? Okay, thank you Terry. I'd like to turn to Ann Marie Pietak, the Report of the FAF Treasurer.
Okay. The report begins on Master Page 253. Just in brief, we ended the quarter, so September 30th, with $64 million 35,000 in net assets. That compared to year-end, 2016, is down $473,000 and is 1.9 million better than what we had budgeted for. The favorable variance to budget is largely driven by favorable expenses, so a million five of favorable expenses. And, you know, the first one of those, as far as really thinking about what's driving it, is in part IT, where all of those wonderful things Terry just described, not only did they get accomplished, but they got accomplished below budget. So, we're very grateful to the staff and everyone working together to not only deliver that project, but deliver it below budget. So, thank you for that. Also, as far as expenditures this year, spent less than budget on both professional development and travel, as well as on the staffing front. Right now, we've got 10 open positions, five of those which we're not actively pursuing to fill. So, with that, there's nothing of note during the quarter as far as activity on the balance sheet specifically. So, I'd close my remarks unless there's any questions.
Questions for Ann Marie? Okay, thank you Ann Marie. We come to the We come to this time of year, this point in our public meeting, that we like to recognize our departing trustees. So I'm going to start with Anne-Marie. And Anne-Marie, if you can join me.
We have a proclamation from the Board of Trustees to Anne-Marie, and I won't read the whole thing, but it acknowledges that we extend our sincerest appreciations for your invaluable contributions in guiding the strategic direction and business affairs of the foundation, especially recognizing your contributions as secretary and treasurer of the foundation and as a member of the Audit and Finance and Compensation Committees. Would also note your service previously as a member of the Private Company Review Committee, which, if you recall, was a committee set up by this board to ensure the effective functioning of the PCC and the FASB, which I think is quite critical and important to the needs of private company users. So with that, Anne-Marie, I want to thank you and congratulate you on five great years of service.
Yeah, I thank you very much, and it's been an honor to be a part of this work.
Thank you. Okay, Charles Cox.
Charles has been trying for years to conclude his service as chairman of our Audit and Finance Committee. But again, we want to thank you for all of your important contributions. And in addition to chairing the Audit and Finance Committee and being a member of the Compensation Committee, Charles has also served as a member of our Executive Committee as a committee chair. And obviously, one of the important roles of all of our governmental trustees is advising the Appointments Committee on how we select the very best talent from the governmental community in order to best serve the needs of governmental users and preparers. And so with that, Charles, I want to thank you for your service and a terrific five years.
Great, thank you. It's been an honor, and I especially want to thank you for your leadership of our group. It's been a wonderful, a pleasure to work with you.
Great, thanks, Charles. And then last, but certainly not least, John Dugan.
Actually, John, this could go on for a second page, but we want to thank you for your strategic leadership to the foundation involving congressional leaders and administration officials in Washington, DC. You've provided invaluable guidance and thought leadership on the future direction of global standard-setting and on the importance of generally accepted accounting principles to the U.S. and the global capital markets. We also want to recognize your contribution as a member of the Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee and the Appointments and Evaluations Committee, and we are going to miss you terribly.
This is great. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure, an honor, and a pleasure and a privilege to work with all of you and to be associated with the crucial mission of the U.S. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. This now concludes the public portion of our FAF Board of Trustees meeting. I want to thank everyone listening on the webcast and remind everyone that our next Board of Trustees meeting will be held on February 27th, 2018. Thanks very much, and we are now adjourned.